Good evening.
This 68th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight, in lieu of a vacation, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by five-year-old Maxie Scheifler.
A pledge of allegiance. Say it. Let's go.
(inaudible).
I'm standing.
(inaudible).
I'm standing.
(inaudible).
I'm standing.
(inaudible).
I'm standing.
(inaudible).
A pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Shantae Gai, Baltimore Community Mediation Center.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and thank you to members of the City Council. When I am asked what we do at the Baltimore Community Mediation Center, I quite briefly tell folks that we squash beef. We help folks in Baltimore have very difficult conversations, no matter where they are, in their need to have those conversations. The Baltimore Community Mediation Center provides its services for free, and they have been doing that for over 25 years. We believe in meeting people where they are and in squashing beef where it happens. And so, in over 140 free locations around Baltimore City, we're going into neighborhoods where folks are having issues with their neighbors, whether it's about trash, or dog waste on their yard, or whatever it's about. We go into all of the prisons in Baltimore City, so that folks who are six months to 24 months away from coming home are able to have conversations with family members and friends about what life looks like after they come out. Independent research proves that in the time that BICMIK has been doing this work, that we have reduced recidivism rates by just allowing folks to have conversations about making plans. Imagine not knowing who's gonna pick you up. Imagine not knowing where you're gonna live. Imagine not knowing how you're gonna reconnect with your child. And so, the power of having a difficult conversation while you're behind the wall is immeasurable. We also do it in Hagerstown, because many of the folks who are incarcerated in Hagerstown come home to Baltimore City. In addition to providing mediation services in prisons, we partner with the Office of the State's Attorney, and we conduct mediation cases in all of the district courts in Baltimore City. We're helping students, teachers, and parents have restorative conversations and squash beef in schools. We're helping parents who are having custody and visitation issues resolve their issues outside of a courtroom, because when you're the person that's coming up with the ideas, you're more likely to stick with those ideas than if a judge, or a police officer, or a magistrate tells you to do that work. The final thing that I'll share with you before closing out this showcase is that the mediation center recently, in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, became a Safe Streets operator. And so, what better way to marry the work that we've been doing for 25 years of reducing interpersonal violence that has the potential to escalate to physical violence than to institute a Safe Streets location where we have folks who are standing in front of guns? Literally, I've seen my staff do it, to make sure that violence in our streets is effectively reduced over time. Feel free to reach out to us. We are located at the corner of Green Mountain 33rd. It's where we've been since 1995. And let us know if you have questions, or if you'd like to refer yourself or others to our services. Again, thank you so much, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work. Tonight, I am incorporating a new segment into this and future council meetings that focus on the success and accomplishments of Baltimore's young people. The Youth Showcase will highlight youth from across Baltimore, whether they are star athletes, artists, or scholars, or student leaders. We will open up our City Council meeting by giving our young people the opportunity to show us exactly why they are our most valued asset, and to remind us why investing in them is the best use of our resources and time. Tonight's Youth Showcase presenter is the McKim Community Association.
Thank you, City Council President. Quick thing, I'd like to thank you guys for having, for giving us this opportunity to share what some of the great things that the McKim Community Association is doing with our youth in the community of Baltimore, not just in the, in the community where it currently sits, in the Jonestown area, but all throughout Baltimore City. If you're not familiar with McKim, I'll give you a brief history of the McKim Center, which is located on, at 1120 East Baltimore Street. It's been in the Jonestown community for over 200 years now. It wasn't until 1945 through the efforts of the Presbyterian Church and the, and the Quakers that the McKim Community Association was founded. This, this allowed them to offer youth programs for children, a free Bible study, Bible school for, for the community, and also athletic training. At that time, it was, it was just only wrestling that was offered. Currently, our youth programs have outgrown the building, but the building still sits there. It serves as after-school pro, as building for after-school programming, summer camps, and also feeding the, feeding the, I'm sorry, feeding the senior citizens, and holding a variety of community meetings. We, today I brought with me a few of our track and field athletes, who has gone on and to do some great things. Not, they're not just really good track and field athletes, they're also great scholars in the classroom. I'm gonna give them an opportunity to speak to you guys, let them know, they're gonna tell you who they are, how long they've been participating in sports, and what some of their plans are after, after they finish competing.
Hi, my name is Kevon Mitchell. I've, with the track and field program, I've been to Texas, Detroit, Michigan, and North Carolina this past summer. My goal is after I'm done with track and field with McKim, compete in high school track and field, or compete in the Olympics.
My name is Jayden Adams, and although I've been running track for two years, my two years running track, I went to Iowa and North Carolina, and I placed 29th in the nation for the 800 meter dash. And after I finish running track for McKim, I'm gonna run track in high school.
My name is Carrie Mitchell, and the school I attend to is Carton Shan School. I'm in fifth grade, and I've been running track ever since I was six, and ever since I've started, I made it to the Junior Olympics. And I, I, in the 400 and 200, I am ranked 15th, and, and, in my relay team, I am ranked, we are ranked second in nation.
Hello, I'm Jordan Thompson. I've been running track for the past nine years. In those nine years, I've been to Iowa, Detroit, and North Carolina for the Junior Olympics. In this past year, I've ranked 15th in the nation for turbo javelin. And my plans after McKim, track and field, I plan to play high school basketball and track. Oh, and I attend Waldorf School of Baltimore.
And again, as I mentioned, they're not just really good athletes, they're actually, they are students, and they're scholars in the classroom as well. And if I didn't get a chance to introduce myself, my name is Garfield Thompson. Outside of McKim, I currently coordinate the track and field program for Wrexham Park of Baltimore City. I know Director Moore, and they just left there a few minutes ago, and I'm not sure if he, they had a chance to share with you guys, but we're actually taking a group of athletes this age, aged 12 to 15, over to Hungary this, later, later on this year, not just to represent Baltimore, but to represent the United States against other countries. So, you guys will be hearing more about that, and the efforts that we are to take these young people across, across the country, across the world, to compete with others in their same age group. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Coach, the only thing that you missed was what school the children are supposed to go to to run track when they get into high school. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, President Scott, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Schleifer, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Costello, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the September 23, 2019 proceedings on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two through four of your agenda. Executive nominations.
EA 19-0251, Emily Hovermail, member, Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Commission.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 19-0252, Darcy Felon Emrick, member, Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Commission, District One.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 19-0253, Lisa Radoff, member, Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Commission.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 19-0254, Radina T. Boyce, member, Sustainability Commission, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 19-0452, Employee-Owned Businesses Reporting, for the purpose of requiring the Director of Finance to provide annual reports to the mayor and city council regarding certain Baltimore City employee-owned businesses, defining certain terms and specifying the contents of the required reports. Sponsors, Henry Cohen, Dorsey Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Mr. President, before I speak to the bill, I just want to say, Councilman Pinkett and I would like to get the contact information for the McKim folks, because their kids are going to Hungary, and we can't even get buses for our kids to go to the zoo. And so, we want to talk to whoever they're talking to to do travel arrangements. When we're talking about employee-owned businesses, Mr. President, we're talking about a category of the economy that encompasses about 12% of all US workers. And these range from the smallest of small businesses, what we typically call mom-and-pop businesses, to slightly larger ones, like, I think probably the best-known example in Baltimore is Red Amma's Bookstore and Cafe, which is a, you know, a fair-sized worker-owned business, but they get much larger. Many people probably do not realize Lando Lakes and Ocean Spray are large agricultural collaboratives that are worker-owned. And this is a growing part of the economy, and all of the best academic research we can find shows it is a good thing to have more of these businesses. They do better during downturns than traditional private corporations. So, we would like to have the Department of Finance help us collect a little bit more information about the employee-owned businesses here in our city, so that we can better understand how they're doing, and maybe look for ways to help encourage the growth and proliferation of them. So, I thank my co-sponsors, and I look forward to working with the chair for a hearing.
Thank you. Please add Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0453, rezoning 3127 East Baltimore Street, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3127 East Baltimore Street, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a relatively modest rezoning. We believe that there was a mistake in the transform Baltimore plan. Appreciate Chairman Reisinger holding the hearing, and we look forward to zoning this correctly and allowing the business to continue to flourish in this neighborhood.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0454, rezoning Block 7653C, Lot 029, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Block 7653C, Lot 029, located in the rear of 3819 Wilkins Avenue, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the C1 zoning district to the C2 zoning district. Sponsor, Reisinger.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0455, reserved parking space for disabled persons eligibility, for the purpose of repealing a certain requirement for a disabled person to be eligible to obtain a reserved parking space and conforming related provisions. Sponsors, Burnett, Henry, Bullock, Sneed.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the, this bill came from a situation in my district where a constituent, senior citizen who has a disability was denied access to reserved parking in front of her home solely because of having a parking pad in the rear of her home. That seems reasonable on the surface, only she lives in the middle of a block of rowhouses, and the current policy in Baltimore City is that we do not plow or salt those alleys. So, she, in the winter months, in terrible weather, she has no way to access that parking pad, and in a snow event, could not park in front of her home, and had several situations where she had to navigate a very difficult terrain to get to her house, and, and it has a very serious disability that, that makes it very difficult for her. So, this does, this keeps everything else in place for the criteria required for having reserved parking, with the exception of an automatic removal solely because you have a parking pad. So, it doesn't take away any of the other reasons why someone should or shouldn't get it, but it does increase access for people like, like her, and like many others who may live in rowhouses across the city of Baltimore. And thank you to my co-sponsors, look forward to a good discussion in committee on this. Thank you.
Please add Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0456, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Clarification, for the purpose of clarifying the tax credit qualification deadline for certain high-performance newly constructed dwellings, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Costello, Henry, Middleton.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill merely extends the deadline for the application. One of the issues that came about is that BCIT was working on amending the online form in conjunction with the Department of Finance. That form is not going to be completed until late October, about 50 or 60 days after the ordinance was enacted. And the ordinance is very specific that individuals who were caught in that middle period that we discussed last time when this bill was introduced had 90 days. So, this basically extends that deadline to the end of February of 2020. It does not change the bill in any way, shape, or form, other than the deadline to submit the application. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0457, Elected Officials' Financial Disclosure, for the purpose of requiring Baltimore City elected officials to disclose certain receipts made to business entities substantially controlled by the elected officials, altering the due date for elected officials to file financial disclosure statements, conforming related provisions, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Dorsey.
Please add President Scott as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. If I accept a gift of $20 from somebody who does business with the city, I am obligated to declare that on an annual financial disclosure form. If I own a business, I am required to disclose that I own that business. But if I use that business to accept large sums of money from anybody, for any reason at all, I don't have to disclose that I'm receiving those large sums of money through the business that I own, because it's the business that's receiving them, not me, even though I am the sole owner of that business, or a significant portion of the ownership of that business. This is a loophole in our financial disclosures law that was very notably exploited, and this bill seeks to close that loophole. And do one other thing, that is, make these financial disclosures useful to the voters of Baltimore City. If I file my financial disclosure under the current requirements of the law, nobody will be able to see it until after my primary election this coming year. The deadline does not fall until after the primary election. This bill moves it up to January, so the voters of Baltimore City have all of that time in between to examine, you know, and I imagine for the, the journalists who are an integral part of our democracy, to be able to examine these disclosures and share that information. And so, I proudly put forth this bill today. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Please add Councilman Henry as a co-sponsor, Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor, and Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. This bill has been assigned to Judiciary Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 19-0169R, Investigative Hearings, Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, for the purpose of inviting the chief of the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office to report to the City Council on the effectiveness of meeting minority business enterprises and women's business enterprises' participation goals. Sponsors, Henry, President Scott, McCray, Dorsey, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We recently held a hearing of the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission, and we reviewed the audit of this office for the fiscal years 16 and 17, and a number of inconsistencies were revealed, and I thought it would be a worthwhile thing to have a larger conversation just specifically about this audit and its findings. So, I'm looking forward to having the relevant parties come in, and we can find out the details. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Resolution 19-0170R, Let Our Local Communities Act Locally, for the purpose of expressing the Baltimore City Council's support for the goals of local Maryland, a coalition aimed at preventing state preemption laws that serve primarily as a tool to rein in progressive government, progressive local governments, and protecting the rights of local governments, to pass laws that support healthy families, a clean environment, and good jobs in our local jurisdiction and municipalities throughout Maryland. Sponsors, President Scott, Clark, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Middleton, Pinkett, Bullock, Sneed.
Please add Councilman Henry as a co-sponsor, Councilman Scheifler as a co-sponsor. Thank you to the co-sponsors. This resolution expresses of the council's support of local Maryland, a coalition which seeks to protect local governments' ability to pass laws that support healthy families, a clean environment, and good jobs, without the threat of state preemption laws that curtail progressive governments. I am proud to partner with Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark on this important legislation, and the chair now recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I move for immediate adoption, I'd like to add that we have all suffered an attempt at this kind of preemption of local governments in Maryland a couple years ago, when we successfully did, were working to pass our own minimum wage law here for the city. And we were moving along just fine, and all of a sudden, down in Annapolis, somebody introduced a bill to, to remove the ability of all local subdivisions in Maryland to pass the minimum wage bills. These are the kinds, oh, it didn't pass. But half of the city council and city had to go down there to make it stop, and thanks to other counties who joined in that effort. So, often in progressive governments, such as our own, that local governments closest to the people, what happens is that states want to take away the powers we have to make a difference like that. So, this is a salute to the people who are trying to prevent this across the United States, and thanks to the General Assembly in Maryland on our behalf for leaving us alone. I'd like to move, Mr. President, if I may, for passage of this legislation by suspending the, immediately, by suspending the rules and then adopting the bill.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Schleifer, Councilwoman Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Reisinger, oh, sorry, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. Thank you, Councilwoman.
City Council Resolution 19-0171R, Gun Trace Task Force Getting to the Bottom of the Corruption, for the purpose of calling on the Baltimore Police Department to convene an investigation conducted by a trusted and independent entity outside of the department in order to fully delve into how the Gun Trace Task Force was permitted to operate in such a reckless and corrupt manner, and inviting the Baltimore Police Department to come before the City Council to discuss that investigation's findings. Sponsors, President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Sneed, Clark.
Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Thank you to all my colleagues for your support. We all know and understand what happened with the Gun Trace Task Force and this preceding units of Violent Crime Impacts Division, and we were told in this very chamber last October that there was an underway internal investigation, only to hear from Commissioner Harrison a few weeks ago, that his predecessor did not do that, that there was no internal investigation completed into this matter. This resolution calls for BP to do that, but do that in a way that not only deals with the internal factions, but uses a outside entity in order to do that, to maintain the, the trust of the citizens of Baltimore. So, we know that we have a state commission that is looking to this as well, but locally, we also have a responsibility, and the department itself has a responsibility to make sure that they're rooting out corruption on their side, and working with our consent decree team to do so. So, I'm very thankful to everyone's support for this resolution today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that this bill be immediately adopted.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Schleifer, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman Clark.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution 19-0172R, October Youth Justice Awareness Month, for the purpose of declaring that October is Youth Justice Awareness Month. Sponsors, Stokes, President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, tonight I'm introducing a resolution recognizing October as Youth Awareness Month. Youth Justice Awareness Month was launched in 2008 by Tracy McClurd as a memorial to her son, Jonathan, who committed suicide after realizing that being charged as adult would make it impossible to be, to become what he always wanted to be, a doctor. Throughout the month of October, youth across the city of Baltimore will be engaging in activities to shine a light on injustices in our criminal justice system. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success will help uplift these great activities, such as the Youth Design Session on October the 17th. You can visit www.bmorechildren.com for the full list of Youth Justice Awareness Month activities. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Schleifer, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman Clark.
The motion is approved. This bill has been adopted. Consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar on Section 8 at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. Committee reports. We will now move to bills. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short title on second and third reader for the remainder of the hearing.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. We will read short titles for the main remainder of the meeting. We will now move to bills on second reader. Executive appointments.
EA 19-0245- EA 19-0245 Sabrina Johnson Turner.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on September the 25th, 2019. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved.
EA 19-0250 Joe Dennis.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on September the 25th, 2019. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye. All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved. Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0351 Rezoning 3515 East Lombard Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
We had a hearing on this, I believe on the...
Councilwoman, is your mic working?
Yes. So we had a hearing on this last week, and I would like to move the findings first.
Without objection, the findings of facts will be adopted. The findings of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
And next, I would like to move the bill.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to Third Reader.
City Council Bill 19-0360 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District, Variance 1214 Bolton Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
I would like to move the finding of the facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
And now I would like to move the bill.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to Third Reader.
City Council Bill 19-0392 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 2132 West Baltimore Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Yeah, so I would like to move the finding of the facts first.
Without objection, the finding of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
And next, I would like to move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye. All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
And now I would like to move the bill.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to Third Reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0409 Transparency and Oversight in Claims and Litigation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schiefer.
The committee heard the bill on September 16th. It is approved unanimously, and there are no amendments, so I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, and this bill moves to Third Reader. Third Reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 19-0337 The Jordan McNair Youth Athletic Protection Act.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are amendments on my colleague's desk. Can I move those amendments?
All those in favor of approving these amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we invoke Rule 12-3B to pass an amended bill on Third Reader on the same day.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Schiefer, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Costello, Councilwoman Stokes, Councilwoman Snead, Councilwoman Clark.
This bill is approved. Oh, yeah. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello. Just got to move the bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this...
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schiefer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0294 Rezoning Certain Properties to Be Rezoned to the New IMU-2 Zoning District. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schiefer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0338 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1110 Edmonton Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schiefer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0369 Rezoning 2908 Belmont Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schiefer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0370 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variances 1326 West Pratt Street. President Scott, Costello, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schiefer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0377 Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schiefer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0412 City Property Renaming Engine 52 Fire Station to Hilton L. Roberts Senior Fire Station. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schiefer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Stokes, Snead, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee Announcements. If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule 97 to refer the following resolution read by the clerk to the Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution 19-0162-R Informational Hearing Baltimore's Fiscal Readiness for Kerwin.
Committee Announcements. Committee Announcements. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. We will be hearing your resolution, that resolution, on December 3rd at 5:30 PM in the chambers. It will be televised on Charm TV, and it will focus on our fiscal readiness for Kerwin. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Permission to suspend Rule 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule is suspended.
Thank you. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill Number 19-0456 this Thursday, October 10th, 2019, at 10:05 AM, and it's the High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Clarification.
Thank you. Councilman Schiefer.
The Public Safety Committee will have a hearing prior to our monthly police oversight on October 10th at 4:30 PM on Baltimore Police District Stations Relocations and Renovations. The committee will hold this hearing on the renovation relocation of Baltimore Police District Stations that were included in the city's budget priorities as forwarded to the governor. The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on November 19th at 4:00 PM on Bill Number 19-0443 Gun Offender Registration Additional Violations. Lastly, the committee will hold, Public Safety Committee will hold another hearing on November 19th at 4:05 PM on Bill Number 19-0451 on Biennial Comprehensive Crime Reduction Plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements this side. Councilwoman Snead.
The Land Use Committee will have a Bill Number 19-0368. Will have a hearing on October the 23rd, 2019, at 1:10 PM for rezoning of 1141 Popular Grove Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 141 Popular Grove Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plate from the R-6 Zoning District to the C1 Zoning District. The second one is Bill Number 19-0159-R for Wednesday, November 13th, 2019, at 5:00 PM. This will be televised, and this one is for an investigative hearing, building backpacks of untreated sewage for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Law Department, Office of the Information Technology, the Health Department, Mayor's Office of Emergency Management to appear before the City Council to discuss the effectiveness and sufficiency of measures being taken to address basement backups of raw sewage in the city. Bill Number 19-0416, the hearing will be held Wednesday, November 20th, 2019, at 1:00 PM for the zoning conditional use conversions of a single family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 Zoning District, Variances 2005 West Baltimore Street. Bill Number 19-0421 for a hearing of Wednesday, November 20th, 2019, at 1:05 PM, rezoning rare portions of 6240 and 6242 Belona Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the rare portions of the properties known as 6240 and 6242 Belona Avenue. Bill Number 19-0367 for a hearing of Wednesday, November 20th, 2019, at 1:10 PM for rezoning 129 and 131 South Stroder Street. Bill Number 19-0350 on Wednesday, December 4th, 2019, at 1:00 PM, the hearing will be held, be held, rezoning 1432 North Chester Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1432 North Chester Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plate from R8 Zoning District, C1 Zoning District. The next one is Bill Number 19-0384. The hearing will be held Wednesday, December 4th, at 1:10 PM, rezoning 3302 Edgewood Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3302 Edgewood Street, AKA 35 West Forest Park Avenue, Block 2911, Lot 023. And last, Bill Number 19-0156R. The hearing will be held on Wednesday, December 4th, 2019, at 5:00 PM. The Land Use Committee will reconvene the hearing on City Council Resolution 19-0156R, and this hearing will be televised. Okay, and the next one, 19-0159R, where the hearing will be held on Wednesday, November 13th, 2019, at 5:00 PM. This hearing will be televised as well. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Council, Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, October 23rd, at 10:00 AM to review the following nominations for the Mayor's Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Commission. Emily Hoover-Mell, Dorsey Phelan Emrick, Lisa Rudolph, Rudolph. Also, on that same day, there will be a hearing on the Commission on Sustainability for Mr. Regina T. Boyce. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, October 24th, at 2:30 PM on City Council Resolution 19-0163R. This is for 311 Services, and whether or not service requests are being closed at the request of Councilman Pinkett. Judiciary Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November 5th, at 10:00 AM. Council Bill 19-0403 Fair Election Fund Establishment and Administration at the Request of Councilman Burnett. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Burnett is being recognized last, and he's donning a blue and gold tie as his beloved Emerson Red Storm was defeated by Murvo on Friday, so as a new tradition in the council, he's the last person to speak tonight. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would note that while we did not do well on the scoreboard, the Red Storm fought with dignity and respect and fought to the very end. They tried their best, and that's really what counts in sports today, sir. The Health Committee had previously announced a hearing on Tuesday, November 20th, to discuss the use of tobacco use in the city of Baltimore. The committee is still holding a hearing on this date beginning at 5:00 PM, but the topic has changed to the state of health in the city of Baltimore instead of tobacco use, and we will reschedule the tobacco use hearing for a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. So before I go any further, I'd like to, we, tonight we passed the Jordan McNair Youth Protection Act. I'd like to recognize Tanya Wilson and Marty McNair, the Jordan McNair Foundation and Jordan's parents. Let's please give them a round of applause for being here. And if, Councilman Costello, if you could request floor privileges for them and to allow them to speak, that would be greatly appreciated. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I move to extend floor privileges to your special guest, the parents of Mr. Jordan McNair.
Without any objection, floor privileges will be extended.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is where, this is where we start to be impactful, to make a difference in the state in saving student athletes' lives. We have to bring our mission's foundation, our foundation's mission is to bring awareness, education, and prevention to heat-related injuries. However, we need to do that not only at a older level, however, we need to do it at a young student athlete level, so even with our little kids. And again, teach them to, even though we, we're as parents, we put them in the hands of adults who think, we think they know what they're doing, however, the more people that we do show the signs and symptoms of heat-related injuries and just all injuries that could happen on the actual field of life, the field of sports, because again, that teaches a lot of young people the basics in life, and that starts the fundamentals to be successful in life. However, from where we're standing at by losing our son, Jordan, this is an opportu, this is an opportunity for us, again, to be impactful. Our organization started last year, but the interesting thing out of the 30-plus kids that died at the NCAA level from a heat-related injury, and not to mention the 70-plus children that have died at the AAU and high school level at, as a result of heat-related injuries, the one thing was is nobody's ever stepped up. It's only one family in Florida and us. This is it. So how can we be more impactful? We can be more impactful with Mr. Council, Mr. President's, Scott's assistance and you all's assistance in implementing policy, implementing bills that will hold everyone accountable that have the protection or we trust with our children. And this is the only way that it gets done, and this is a start, the way of getting it done as well, because again, when we go into our next city with awareness, education, and prevention, we can talk about what we did at home in Baltimore City, and this is the best way to keep our student athletes safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you, President, and to the City Council. Jordan, he's smiling down on us today. He really is. And if you all, you all have ever seen the pictures of Jordan, that smile, that was Jordan, so thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to bring my special guest, Pedro Palomino, up.
Without objection, your guests will have floor privileges.
We are living through a moment where public trust is at a premium. We have a fragmented media landscape, a president, not this one, but a national president who propagates the idea of fake news and a public trust deficit within our country. Trust is even harder to come by in the immigrant community. How can you trust government when government sees fit to arrest and deport a man who committed no actual crimes outside of his nine-year-old son's school? But there is one voice that is trusted within our immigrant community here in Baltimore, and that voice belongs to Pedro Palomino. Pedro has been a reporter in Baltimore for 10 years. He began with Mundo Latino Newspaper in Maryland, Virginia, and DC. As technology improved, he developed Somos Baltimore Latino and began his studio broadcasting career. He is one of the most trusted voices in media for a community that truly lacks trust at the moment and faith in the public, and so I want to present this citation. Be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Pedro Palomino in recognition of your 10-year contribution to journalism in Baltimore through Somos Baltimore Latino and Mundo Latino. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on today, the 7th of October. Signed, Council President Scott and myself, Councilman Zeke Cohen. Congratulations.[1798.62][1798.62]
For the general public, 'cause he was so brief, I hope his vows aren't that brief. Councilman Dorsey is getting married this upcoming Saturday. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Mazel tov to my colleague over here. Go get him. YJAM, the Youth Justice Awareness Month, uh, will have a symposium, uh, that will be on October 29th at 4:00 PM here in City Hall. It's a partnership, uh, between the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, YJAM, my office, and hopefully everyone else. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would also like to have everyone join me in wishing Councilman John Bullock a happy birthday. His birthday was yesterday. Happy birthday, Councilman. And in true Councilman Bullock fashion for his birthday, he went out and ran a 18-minute 5K. Unfortunately from him, his son Thomas ran a 17-minute 5K. Not yet, but it's soon to come. Happy birthday. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
I am so sorry. Um, can, when we have our moment of silence, can we also please honor Elizabeth Tolan? She, um, a wonderful lady that lived up in the 4th Council District, um, mother of Dan and two other sons and a daughter. Remarkable and, um, she died just last Friday and, um, is greatly grieved, but she had a great life and thank you for, um, thinking of her in this moment of silence.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, October 28th, 2019 at 5:00 PM and may we have a moment of silence for the 258, uh, victims of violence and their families and also the continued opioid epidemic and also to Elizabeth, the family of Elizabeth Tolan.
There being no further business, this concludes the 68th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council.